Good evening, everyone. It's a little after 6:30. We're going to start the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 15th. All selectmen are present with the exception of Selectman Kalenda. I will be chairing the meeting tonight in his absence. Before we get to the first scheduled appointment, I am going to jump ahead to item number two. This is an item that we'll be covering and will be discussing later, but it's just one administrative matter under appointment number two that I want to take under consideration right now. And that relates to the memo that was provided to this board by special counsel, offering its opinions on special town meeting Articles One and Two, and whether this board wants to act to release that memo to the public, specifically to the proponents of Articles One and Two. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to release special legal counsel's review of... I'll make a motion to release special legal counsel's review of the citizens petition, Article One and Two.
I'll second for discussion. Any discussion on it? And I would just like to point out that this is not a precedent-setting thing. This is not...does not mean that we will automatically release this in the future when asked. This is a one-time thing based on...it's specific to the information that's contained in the memo and the opinion that was offered by special counsel. So this is not intended to set a precedent in this manner, but it's just intended for this one-time action. And special counsel does concur with releasing this memo as well. So having...yes, Ms. Fanna?
If we do vote to release it this evening, I suggest that we have a few handouts available when the individuals...you already have...if you have. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unopposed, passes unanimously. I'm going to go back to scheduled appointment number one. Representative Dykema, Senator Eldridge, thank you very much for joining us yet again. It's always a pleasure to have the two of you come and talk with us and give us updates on what's going on in Boston. We appreciate you taking the time to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
So, thank you very much for having us. And I always enjoy coming before the board and going to just hand it out my letter to the board about some budget priorities. And later on, happy to take questions. So, as you probably know, the House did recently pass its budget, which I know Representative Dykema will talk about. The Senate budget came out last Thursday, and amendments have been filed, and we will be debating the Senate FY19 budget on Tuesday. So, certainly appreciate any feedback. In terms of the letter that I just handed out, sort of focused on the budget, you know, I do continue to be focused on a recognition that to fully fund different agencies, education line items, we do need to raise more revenue. So I am a supporter of closing corporate tax loopholes to do that. I am also a supporter and the House...excuse me, the Senate passed a bill around short-term rentals, Airbnb. So don't know how many short-term rentals there are in Southborough, but probably are some. And so the bill that the Senate passed would not only have a state tax, but it would have a local options tax, so Southborough could possibly get some revenue from that. In terms of the budget priorities, of course, the top priorities are always local aid, so Chapter 70, education aid, Chapter 90, money, which is money for roads and bridges, sped circuit breaker, regional school transportation. I know it's a particularly important issue for the Agonquin School in Northborough/Southborough. Transportation front, improving public transportation across the state, including the MBTA, RTAs. The Senate has a higher number at $88 million for Regional Transit Authority. Then bus service. On the second page, maintaining funding for vital social safety net services, including programs to help the homeless, low-income families, at-risk children, those with disabilities, and the elderly. Fully funding the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. I don't know if the board members read some of the articles since last week, but the state senate passed the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations. So that's a series of recommendations about increasing four key areas of state funding for education. So it's special education, ELL, population, healthcare costs, paying the healthcare costs of teachers and staff, and also, sorry, also Chapter 70, education aid, the foundation budget in general. So the Senate passed that, so that sort of creates a roadmap for investments, hopefully over the next several years. The Senate budget does increase some of those categories, so including special education. The fifth item, capital infrastructure, so supporting transportation, water, higher education, libraries, and public schools, many of which are funded by either the gas tax or the sales tax. And then the last item, protecting the environment. That's something that Representative Dykema and I have had a very strong partnership on. We file a number of environmental bills together. Want to commend her today, the Worcester Telegram and Gazette had a very positive story about her bill to regulate neonicides, the pesticides that's really harmed the bee population in Massachusetts and across the country. So she's been the leader on that. We also partner on water infrastructure, providing more state funding for water infrastructure, which I think is particularly relevant for Metro West as it continues to grow and more companies continue to come to Metro West, is having the water infrastructure to support that level of development. And then there is what's called the green budget, so a commitment to fund the state budget for protecting the environment to 1%. Right now, it's about .5%. So this is everything from the DEP to DCR, or state parks, the environment of ecological restoration. And so I'm hopeful that we can get to 1%. You know, people care deeply about the environment. They like the recreation, the quality of life. That's why people live here in Massachusetts and raise their kids. So we really need to provide more state support to protect our air and water and recreational opportunities. So those are the budget priorities I go into the Senate budget on. And again, the Senate budget debate begins next Tuesday. And look forward, after Representative Dykema's presentation, to answer any questions. Thanks again for having me.
Thank you, Senator. And likewise, it's always great to come before the board once a year during budget season and say hello and answer your questions. And I will give a brief overview. As the Senator had mentioned, the House did our budget about several weeks ago, right after April break. We debated our budget. So we've got some numbers now that will be brought into conference committee and will continue to advocate to make sure that especially on the local budget items, which I know are particularly important to this board, that we maximize the amount of funding that we can bring back for the important work that you do. So I'll just give a brief summary and then a few highlights of some legislative initiatives, and then maybe we can open it up for your questions. As the Senator mentioned, Chapter 70, education aid, is always a top priority for communities, and I know for Southborough as well. We were able to add money in the House above, over and above what the governor had originally put in in his budget, such that Southborough is expected, at least through the House budget, to receive $2.95 million this year for K-12 education, which is great news. The unrestricted general government aid, consistent with recent past practice, has been increased...bless you, in the House budget, equal to the amount that revenues are anticipated to grow, which is 3.5% for the upcoming year. On the special education side, I know that's always a big concern. I've spoken with the Northborough/Southborough School Committee, and they are very much in favor, obviously, of more special education funding, which we were also able to do, moving toward what the Senator had mentioned around the Foundation Budget Review recommendations to, over a number of years, add more back into that particular item as well. Regional school transportation is always something that I hear from Southborough about. Obviously, regional schools have challenges geographically with bringing folks in and busing, and with the increased cost of fuel, the transportation costs for schools across the board have risen dramatically. So that was a big push for the Regional Schools Caucus this year, and we were able to add a significant amount of money into that, which is a good victory for regional schools. As always, we fully fund veterans' benefits and committed to fulfilling our obligations under Chapter 115. Also, public libraries was level-funded this year, and I know libraries are very important to the Southborough community. Couple of other things worth noting. Chapter 90, which is the state reimbursement program for local transportation, i.e. roads and sidewalks, was passed in the House at $200 million, which is the standard amount, which would translate to $433,000 coming to Southborough to reimburse local roadwork. And we did it in time. Hopefully, that the town will be able to take advantage of the spring repaving season and get the full benefit of that. Another item that I know is always of interest to Southborough are trails and improving the trail networks here. The environmental bond bill, which came out recently and recently had a hearing, has a significant contribution, financial contribution, to expanding trail networks in the Commonwealth. And happy to provide the community with more information about those programs once the bond bill is finally approved, and we hope that those provisions will be in the final bill as well. Transportation, and particularly commuter rail, has been something that I've been spending a lot of time on. The Senator and I and a lot of our colleagues have been riding the Worcester-Framingham Line, which is the rail that stops here in Southborough. And I know there are a lot of commuters from our area that use that rail line. It's becoming of increasing importance to our region, especially if anyone has taken the Pike into Boston recently, and in fact, taken the Pike out of Boston on reverse commute schedules. The volume of traffic that is accommodated has really grown exponentially over the last three to five years, and that makes the commuter rail and reliability of the commuter rail and frequency of the commuter rail even more important for our region. We're looking at...there's a visioning study that's been commissioned by the administration to look specifically at commuter rail and the future of commuter rail, and where we can make targeted investments to improve that, which is, again, something I'm going to be paying a lot of attention to as both a representative of this region and as the vice chair of the Transportation Committee on the House side. Few other upcoming bills worth noting. We expect to do another piece of opiate legislation this session. That is something that, as Mark knows well from his work on MMA, something that continues to plague, I would say, every community. And it's amazing how many families in every community that that issue has touched, whether it be providing Narcan, providing more treatment options, or a provision that I filed, which would be similar to what was done in New York, which requires that all prescribing of controlled substances, including opiates, be done electronically. Ironically, until 2010, the federal government did not allow you to electronically prescribe opiates, but it opened that up in 2010. This would actually require that physicians electronically prescribe in order to minimize the lost and stolen prescription pads and the forged prescriptions, which are being used to fuel the black market. So they've had great success in New York, and it looks initially like that provision, which I file, will also be included in our bill, which is good news. So I guess that's just some highlights. Happy to take any questions. And again, thanks for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick points I want to make, and then I'll turn it over to the rest of my board. First, I just wanted to point out, I'm sure you're aware, that two weeks ago, we had a groundbreaking for the Public Safety Complex just down the road as well. And I know that you were instrumental in securing some funding in the current state budget towards that project, and we just wanted to, again, thank you for that.
Thank you.
We look forward to that project continually, and hopefully you can stop by, and we'll be available for the ribbon cutting next year.
Yes, congratulations. We are very sorry to miss the groundbreaking, but the ribbon cutting we will not miss for sure.
Excellent. Plus, your letter touches upon it as well as the CPA revenues.
Oh, yes, yes.
And the funding for that. I know that there's a lot of uses that our community has for the community preservation funds. And I know that the state match has been on a steady decline from 100% match that it started at years and years ago, down to projected 11%, I guess now.
11%, that's right.
So hopefully we can...if there are any things being done to increase that.
Yes, and Brian, I apologize, I skipped over that, but yeah, one of my colleagues, Senator Cream, has filed an amendment that would bring the match back up to 50%. It's attached to the Senate budget, so we're hoping that will pass. And that would at least get all communities back to 50% match. So I would co-sponsor that.
I know those funds were very instrumental in improvements that we've made to our new golf course, which...so anything we can do to increase the match on that is greatly appreciated as well.
Absolutely.
Certainly, if there are any tournaments that the state senator or the House would like to have, we have a nice golf course down the road.
Yeah.
Be happy to host you at that. Exactly, yeah, exactly. That's all I have again. Thank you for coming, Mr. Schiffer.
Thank you.
My only fan, thank you for coming and the presentation. In the estimates that you give in the handout, I'm just curious what the urban revitalization would be, or like some examples of that, if it was there? I only ask because we're doing a lot in our downtown, and I'm just constantly thinking of like funding opportunities or things we can do there. And was just wondering if there would be anything there to help out, either with water and sewer, septic, zoning, some of the major issues that plague that project?
Absolutely, Brian. Yeah, on the water and sewer front, you know, there's something called the Clean Water Trust, which does provide zero-interest loans to towns and cities for sewer, you know, wastewater, drinking water. So that's separate from this budget. Urban revitalization, my guess is that's, you know, funding targeted towards certain, you know, communities that are very low income and obviously probably in cities. So, and that's why you're seeing zero for the cherry seed for Southborough. So, but there are...there is funding for water infrastructure through the Clean Water Trust, which is under the State Treasurer's office. And that's part of some of the work we've done on water infrastructure.
If there are particular projects or initiatives that you think would be helpful to do, you know, there's kind of a patchwork of different funding sources available, and depending on which ones may match with the particular needs, there may be some funds available. So I don't know, you know, maybe work with Mark's office to come up with a list of things that you might be looking for, and we can see if we can match them up with some available funding sources, if there are any.
Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Fanna?
Thank you again for showing up this evening. ADA compliance. Are there grants available for recreation and old buildings that the town has to address? They're addressing them in piecemeals, but are there grants available?
Hmm, sure.
For some reason, I think there are. I don't have it here in front of me, the details, but I do remember reading something about that somewhere. Do you have a particular project in mind?
No, I was wondering...I guess I'm leaning more toward funding an ADA committee in a local community with a grant so that they can evaluate and then apply for grants?
Needs.
A needs assessment.
Needs assessment.
We'll find out.
Okay. And the second question is, I see Senator Eldridge, you make mention of homelessness, low-income families, at-risk children, elderly, and the disabilities, and those with disabilities. Is that something that local housing authorities would address with grants or Department of Mental Health? How is that managed? Who's going to see...who's going to do that work locally?
There's different, you know, there's different programs, you know, for someone that, you know, maybe a member is facing, you know, child is going through a mental health crisis. The DMH, you know, will provide services, or there's the Worcester Recovery Center for, you know, adults or children facing mental health crisis. The housing authorities, there is state funding for housing authorities to house, you know, low-income families or seniors. And then there's different nonprofits that get state funding to address homelessness or to help people with the housing search. And then, of course, for the elderly, it's usually the Council's on Aging and Senior Centers, and Southborough has a terrific senior center, so...so it's sort of a mix of state...some state money just goes to the local level, but some of it is a state agency like DMH or DCF or...
In affluent communities like Southborough, we tend not to qualify for some grants in some situations, whether it be the senior center or Youth and Family Services. And I think I'm looking for a way around that, so everyone is treated...if we're going to talk about treating individuals with opioid crises and others, we should be treating all of our society the same, regardless of where they're living. And at times, we miss the opportunities because we tend to be Southborough.
I mean, the Council on Aging receives state funding, and it's based on the dollar per seniors, so it is equitable community to community, so...
And I have another question. Affordable housing. Southborough has the luxury of having two private schools in town. New England School. There's housing that's provided by the schools and the businesses, and we cannot count those units. They're rented...they're not rentals, but it's part of the arrangement with the employee. So I wonder why we're not looking into that, so that Southborough can count all of those ...that housing stock as affordable units.
Would the people who work or live there qualify based on their income as low income, or...
You would have to ask the private schools.
Okay.
It's part of a pilot program. I know...I'm not sure what college it was in Boston, but they pay a large pilot payment. But I'm not looking for...
Oh, the university's, yeah.
I'm not looking for money. I'm looking for counting the housing stock, which would benefit this town.
I do know that there's been an initial...I think there's at least one piece of legislation that looked at counting, I believe it was trailer parks, trailer park units. There are a number of communities in Massachusetts that have trailers, looking at having those counted as affordable units, even though they are not protected.
Right.
Deeded affordable units. And I think that's really the distinction, is where, you know, how you treat non-deeded affordable units. And up till now, there has not been any progress on that legislation. I think there were a lot of discussions going on around it, but no progress so far. So I guess that would fall into the same category.
Maybe we'll send a letter. Thank you.
Look into that.
Ms. Brashio.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Unfortunately, most of my questions have been asked and answered by you and my fellow board members. I mean, for me, the Chapter 70 money was a question.
Yeah.
I concurred similarly along the lines of Mr. Schiffer's question, and you had also answered my question about funding vets fully. So, thank you. I appreciate you coming.
And I didn't mention that in the House budget, we did increase the per-person allocation for the formula grants for the Councils on Aging, which had been $10 per attendee at the center. And we did raise that in the House budget to $12, which will be great news if we can get that through.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Any other questions? Thank you both very much.
Okay, great to see you.
Safe travels in the storm out there.
Yeah, just stop raining. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your appearance on our behalf.
Still a few minutes before 7 o'clock. I'm going to jump to item three on the agenda. Chief Paulus, if you don't mind, the recommendation to hire Robin Richards as part-time telecommunications officer.
How was everybody tonight?
Good evening, very well. You?
Good. I'll tell you after the Celtics game, but we'll take care of this right now. Very quick tonight, we're just looking to expand our part-time dispatch. We only have two, so we'll be looking to add one more. We did some interviews. We're lucky enough to find Ms. Robin Richards. She'll be graduating from Framingham State this week, and she already works as a part-time telecommunications officer for Upton. So she's fully certified, and as soon as we complete her background check and get all the approvals, we'll bring her in, and we'll just have to train her kind of to the way we do things and the lay of the land here in Southborough, and it looks like she'll be a great addition.
Excellent. Yet again, you found an excellent candidate, it seems, so...
Yes.
Very good. Any questions?
I have one. Excellent candidate. I was wondering, and I do not like this term, a matron for the police department for our female prisoners overnight protective custody. Is this person qualified to do that? I mean, it's an advantage. I'm not...I think it's great, but...
We're actually lucky enough in today's law enforcement that when we need a female officer, any of the number of surrounding towns, we call them in, and we were always able to find one. So I haven't heard the matron term in quite some time, but we're lucky the profession's changing.
Well, we had one.
Yeah. And we're lucky enough to...
But we keep...we keep that individual in our cell. We're not moving a resident to another facility because we do not have that individual to call to our police department?
No.
Okay. I think she's a great candidate. Thank you.
Okay. Just on another quick note, I'll just mention, it was a good week for the department this week. We actually finished our accreditation paperwork, and we'll be asking the state for an appointment to come in. I know it just seems like we got certified recently, but we've been working on the full accreditation paperwork all along. And it's going to take several months for the state to come in and review us and then file the right paperwork. But we'll only be the 61st department in the whole state that has achieved full accreditation when it all goes through, and we'll have some nice seals to put up in the new building. So it was a good week for the department. We're way ahead of schedule, going from certification to full accreditation.
We don't need to design new wall space anywhere for these seals.
It's all covered.
Excellent, excellent.
Don't permanently mount them on the wall, though. We want to move them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
All right, so we do need to vote. That's correct?
Motion.
So is there a motion to...
I'll make an appointment...make a motion to appoint Ms. Robin Richards as a part-time telecommunications officer with the Southborough Police Department. A salary, SAP salary, is $17.62 per hour.
Seconded.
Moved, seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Still a little bit before 7:00. Ms. Gallagher, could we have you for...we have a couple items. What, do we just get those squared away? First is the award of a water main contract for Public Safety Facility Project. It's item four on our agenda.
Yeah, so they're fairly self-explanatory with that. This is for the Cordial Road. It's to get water down to the new Public Safety Building. There's not much to it, except that we just need to award it. The start date's supposed to be July 9th. Everyone know July 9th? Worn it everyone ahead of time, but we'll have signs up and everything on the road.
So that construction will start where and finish?
It's going to...it should start...and actually, I don't know what day yet. We'll have to be back in June to get...there's going to have to be one night...piece of night work, because they have to work right in the intersection of Main Street to tap into the existing main.
At 30 and 85?
Yeah. And then...so it's going to go from there to the Public Safety entrance. So it'll...it comes down the west side of the road, and then it crosses at the Public Safety Building, and we stop there, and Public Safety takes it from there.
So the public facility contractor extends it into the site?
Correct.
You just bring it to the site?
Right.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Ms. Brashio.
Karen, how long do you anticipate that taking?
I think it's going to be like only a four-week, five-week project.
Okay, thank you.
I have a...
Go ahead.
On the last paragraph of the letter from Parr, do we have to make a motion that says Parr recommends that the town add a condition of notice of award that requires the excess soil to be removed?
Um...
soil to be removed?
I think as part of the vote, that, that, yes, that we, that it's just, it's awarded with contingencies.
But we don't need to state that.
No, just, and just to give everybody a little bit of information, too, the gas main is going to be coming down this summer, too, from Main Street down to the Public Safety Building. I don't have a date for that yet, but we tried to get them to at least stage it, give us at least a week to get our water main going, so that we can keep one lane of traffic open. So that's not gonna be a beautiful site to be at from somewhere around July 16th, it's gonna be even worse than July 9th. We're supposed to all be off the roads by August 15th. The DPW is also helping the school by doing some work at Woodward School with paving and a wall and everything, so they're also gonna have construction trucks trying to get in and out that aren't related to the water and the gas main, so if you have a way to get around Cordville Road and Route 30 for the summer months, feel free.
Okay. And it's in the contractor's bid to do any repaving work on 85?
So on 85, actually, they're gonna, they are putting in a, a temporary patch, but because of the fact that the Main Street project goes down part of it, they're gonna have, that piece will get relayed, you know, they're gonna relay that asphalt at some point, and then the last piece, that little piece on Cordville, will use road money once the Public Safety Building's done and all that's gone in and out, because you've got a lot of utilities and construction work that's gonna happen there, then we'll just pave that section.
So as a minimum, though, the trench will be paved by the time school starts?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, and, and gas is obligated for that also.
Other questions? So you're not, I will move that we vote to award the water main contract for the Public Safety Facility Project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, moved seconded.
Sorry.
You guys all set?
This award is based on all of the conditions that PAR has laid out on the May 3, 2018 letter.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's part of the motion?
That's part of the motion.
Yes. Moved seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Still don't see Mr. Semino. Actually, while Karen is here, can we jump ahead to consent agenda, item number five, approve the fuel license amendment for new DPW fuel tanks? So I assume the work has been completed?
The work is complete, so we removed two 12,000-gallon underground storage tanks, replaced them with two above-ground 6,000-gallon fuel storage tanks, a whole new system for everything, and it actually looks really good down there, we just have a little paving to do.
Any questions? All those, okay, so as Mr. Purple said, the fire chief has signed off on that also, so I will move that we approve the fuel license amendment for the new DPW fuel tanks. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Why don't we jump quickly to Mr. Malinowski, and then we'll be able to get right to item two on the agenda, as Mr. Semino has just arrived. So this is covering item two under other matters properly before the board, approval of golf course continuity plan during public safety construction. Jason?
So I distributed an email to all of you, I don't know if you want me to read it, but in, in general, there's a condition as part of the planning board, order of conditions for the overall public safety project, that the Board of Selectmen needed to approve a plan that proves that the golf course will remain operational during the entirety of the public safety building project. It also mentioned the St. Mark's Golf Course Committee, because that's what it was named when the condition was written, saying that they needed to get approval, so I just wanted to outline very quickly the process that we underwent, just to, you know, make sure we have a belts and suspenders approach around this. So one of the things I mentioned at our last meeting, for those that were there, is our general contractor has hit the round, hit the ground running, and proposed alterations to the plan that was in the bid specs to accelerate the golf course work, to get them into their permanent, I'll call it home quicker than the bid specs required. That's mainly to help them get that building closed in by winter, so that they're ready to go. It also accelerates the septic plan, et cetera, so that we're cutting the school over well in advance of school returning, as opposed to cutting it pretty short. So they proposed an alternative plan. The superintendent of the golf course met with Mr. Purple on Friday. He outlined about six to seven comments, concerns, questions that he wanted resolved before kind of giving his buy-in to the golf course committee. Those items were kind of reconciled by our owner's project manager, Vertex. We met with the golf course committee last night, our owner's project manager. All of the responses met a satisfactory answer to the golf course committee. They voted unanimously to approve the phasing plan. You have copies of the phasing plan, we'll also make sure it gets posted in case anyone's very curious about the phasing plan, but in short, we're accelerating the golf course work to get it done sooner. The golf course is open on a regular schedule, barring weather, and there is no hindrance of the public safety building construction to the overall operation. There are gonna be some minor tweaks that they're gonna have to adjust to, but they have agreed to, you know, operate with that. And I think it's, just in closing, a remarkable, you know, consideration to everyone that had to collaborate to get that to work, because when you all asked us to, to make that happen, and then planning basically made it a order of condition, that was a pretty tall condition to meet, so I think it speaks volumes to the collaboration that continues on this project to make sure all the varying interests are met in moving towards our ultimate goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jason?
Is there a rough timeframe to this phase one and phase two?
Before August 1st for phase one, then phase two is everything else. So phase two takes you from basically cut over to ribbon cutting. It could be before August 1st, but contractually, I believe it was...
But it'd be in phase two by August 1st?
Yes.
So, so essentially, what that means is from the time that the current clubhouse is vacated in order for it to be moved, and the temporary, and, and golf goes into the temporary trailer, to the, from that point until they move into the clubhouse on its, its new location, we're roughly thinking it's probably about a 45-day period. This is gonna happen very quickly, and the contractor is committed to, you know, moving that quickly from phase one to phase two. If they don't meet the August 1st deadline, you know, there are penalties, monetary, you know, penalties for them for each day they don't meet that, okay? So there is, you know, obviously, an incentive for them to, you know, to meet that deadline, and they're the ones that put the plan together, so, you know, I, I see no reason why they shouldn't get there.
Great, thanks.
Other questions?
Just a comment, Jason, thank you again, and your committee, and the golf committee as well, and, and everybody's hard work and collaborating on this, and, and actually making this happen, it's, it's actually very exciting, so thank you.
Welcome. Excellent. I will move then that we approve the golf course continuity plan during public safety construction as presented by Mr. Malinowski.
Second.
Moved seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it is a few minutes after seven o'clock. I appreciate everyone's patience, for those who are here for the seven o'clock appointment. I will now turn it over to Mr. Semino, the moderator, for the pre-town meeting, for the May 22 special town meeting. I will note that there are other boards and committees that are in attendance tonight. I know that the advisory committee is here. Is full recreation commission here, or just you just representing them? I think it's just you, Chris, okay?
We're expecting one another.
Okay. So, and the way this is gonna run, so obviously, Mr. Semino will run through items he wants to address in his role as moderator. We have invited all the proponents of the articles to come tonight, and this will be an opportunity for our board, and members of the advisory committee, and anybody else, if they would like to ask questions, they may. I know that the advisory committee has scheduled a meeting for tomorrow night, for their group to deliberate based on the questions and the answers that are received tonight, and they will be taking positions on those articles tomorrow night. And one other point that I just want to make, and we addressed this under our first item tonight, if I went right to item two, our board did vote to release the memorandum prepared by special counsel, and there are copies of that memorandum on the back table there, for those who may have come a little bit late and did not, or not here as that was done. So with that, Mr. Semino, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar to how we ran this at the pre-town meeting for the annual town meeting, I'd just like to quickly step through the planned articles and get a sense of, you know, for, against. We'll have town council confirm the quantum of vote for those that are interested in that, and discuss any other issues that may or may not come up. So, and I also note that town, I just, I just read the special counsel's memorandum just in the few minutes I was standing in the back. What he refers to as the first bylaw is actually Article Two.
That is correct.
And the second bylaw is Article One.
Yeah, and just another point of clarification, it references in the first line three petitioned articles. Two of them were nearly identical, and they have been boiled down, if I get this right, or if I get it wrong, please correct me, but I think those are condensed now into the single Article One. Article Two is addressed first in this, so really, while he mentions three petitioned articles, the analysis that he's done is on Articles One and Two, the two articles, so.
Or Two and One, is the case maybe? Okay, so Article One, it would amend the zoning bylaw with reference to the ZBA quorum. This is sponsored by Mrs. Houlihan.
In the back.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Did you, the first question is, did you intend to make a presentation on this article?
Hi, Mr. Semino, yes, I do.
Okay, do you need more than five minutes for something like that? That's generally the time we shoot for.
No, it's, it's sweet and simple.
Okay. Do you, and it, will it be you making the presentation by yourself, or do you have a cadre, or how do, how do you?
It will be me. I will probably be requesting out-of-town counsel to be able to be present with me in case other questions arise that someone that I've asked to be supporting me as legal counsel.
So you have, you have private counsel that's been advising you, that you want to have present at the meeting?
I would, yes.
And he's not a, I assume he's not a...
Correct, Southborough resident.
Okay, do you want to talk to me about that after? I mean, I...
Yeah, that'd be great.
I tend to think that that would be okay in this, in this circumstance, I mean, there's others where I might not, but this is, okay, so we'll have you do a five minute, five-minute presentation on that. Is there anyone in the room that wants to do a presentation, or knows, at least as of now, that they want to do one in opposition to Article One?
Paul, I'll just...
Yes.
So Mr. Tallerman, special counsel, who authored this memo, is unable to be here tonight this evening, but he will be in attendance at the town meeting next week, and we anticipate that he will speak to this.
All right, can we, can we, can you ask him to hold himself to five minutes in the same manner as the proponent?
Yes.
All right. And, and Mr. Cipriano, this being a zoning, proposed change to the zoning bylaw, I assume that's a two-thirds vote.
That is a two-thirds vote, correct.
That's all I have.
Do you want to go through any questions that people may have now?
I was just about to say, that's all I have.
Okay.
If, if, if folks in the audience want to talk to, to Article One for, you know, as it, as it pertains to the conduct of special town meeting, please feel free, through the chair, I guess.
Yeah, I guess, why don't we start with Selectmen, see if advisory has questions, or we can go beyond that?
Okay.
If it's okay with you?
Yep.
Ms. Faniff?
I have several questions, but I'm not an attorney, and where Mr. Attorney Tallerman's not here this evening, I'd like to ask my questions of him first. And the five minutes that you're allocating to special legal, legal counsel on this issue, he will be able to ask, answer the body's questions on our behalf?
Absolutely, so what I was referring to in terms of five minutes was just that if he had a specific presentation in opposition, or, you know, in, he's obviously not a voter in town, so he personally isn't opposing or for anything, but if he's making a presentation on behalf of an opposition position, I would ask that be five minutes, but when we get into debate on the floor, if, if his expertise is needed, we certainly can go there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Mr. Cipriano, you're familiar with the article and the response. Obviously, the response from counsel isn't favorable towards it. Do you think that there is a problem that needs to be solved in a different way, or is there just no problem, in your opinion, or?
The reason that the town needed special counsel is because I am counsel of record on four pending lawsuits, one in Land Court, three in Worcester Superior Court, and also one before the DEP, representing both the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Conservation Commission. And besides defending those proceedings, I'm also prosecuting certain points of law that currently are pending. The specifics of these articles, in great part, relate to those pending aspects of litigation, so, so that I, as town counsel, would not be into a conflicting position of having to address the form and content of these bylaw proposals and defend and prosecute the pending litigation, I stepped back on those points.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from our board?
I have one for, for you, for the board. I note that both the, the Selectmen and advisory have not taken a position yet on this article. I don't know if you're planning to do that tonight, or your committee, Adrian, are you planning to do that tonight?
Yeah, so I believe that advisory is planning to do it at their meeting tomorrow night, if they, if they take a position. They'll be deliberating based on information that they hear tonight, plus other discussions that they have. We have not yet discussed whether to take a position tonight, where we have not had the opportunity to speak with Attorney Tallerman as yet. I don't know that we want to, I'll leave it up to the board to offer any opinions that they would have, though. I know that the planning board held public hearing on Articles One, Two, and Three, actually, last night, and they voted to continue each of those public hearings. The planning board has not taken an opinion as yet, and they owe a report on each of the articles as well prior to the town meeting, so we haven't had the benefit of seeing that report from the planning board as well, so. I don't know if there are others who have a different opinion, but I would, it'd be my preference to hold until, you know, at town meeting or at our meeting prior to town meeting, to, to make our position known.
I mean, I'd like to give my general opinion, maybe it will help form a response for the town meeting by the applicant. I thought initially, some of the points in terms of reaffirming or clarifying something made sense, but after reading the special counsel's response to two of the articles, I, I just have the feeling like we are trying to over-regulate because of one specific instance or problem that happened in the past, and I'm just not sure that that's the right thing to do. So, you know, it'll be part of my questions for special counsel, but maybe the applicant can think of that, too, when they're coming forward at the meeting. can think of that, too, when they're coming forward at the meeting.
I'll say, Ms. Brascio, go ahead.
Thank you. I also have a few questions for Attorney Tallerman, but also I would like to ask Ms. Houlihan a couple of questions as well, if you don't mind, you might be able to answer these for me. Do you know of any other towns that have a policy as far as the second part, I guess, of Article One, the disqualification of members? Have you done any research to see if any other towns, to kind of get a feel of where in zoning codes and surrounding towns a qualifier for that? And I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I can say I have not looked. I, as I mentioned last night at the Planning Board, this was taken word for word from what existed in Chapter 249, so it's nothing that I've added that's new language.
Okay, so I must have missed that when, in looking, because I've gone back through the 249 from 174, I mean, from 1974, the changes in 2007, 2011, and 2017. So I may have missed that, that qualifier being in there. My only concern with that, and I think it was kind of voiced at Planning Board last night, too, is whether or not it's covered by ethics. And I guess that's a question for special counsel for us as well. I know in the past, a supermajority from 1974, what a quorum was, and that seemed to work for a long period of time, until it was changed in 2007. So I'm very open to hearing more information on this from counsel and seeing your presentation as well before I make an opinion, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Ms. Houlihan, if there are any amendments to this, are you planning to have that before town meeting available, well, available at the door of town meeting, so we have an idea of how much it's been changed? Or how do we go about changing this? How would the moderator like this to happen, I guess?
Look, any amendment, we can get to the clerk in advance in writing, will be on the screen in time, you know, if it's in time, we can put it on the screen for everybody's benefit versus, we can still do that, but it will take up a lot of town meeting time to do what might be a substantial amendment from scratch on the floor, but, you know, amendments are always in order, or usually in order, but if we can get them in advance, it's much, much preferred. Yes?
Ms. Faniff, so last night I did put a request out that, that I represent several citizens on this petition, and I think it's the question of can we maintain what we've lived forever with in the town code, which is a quorum of four. So I think we're amenable to changing the language that can update that, but forever, this has been in the code. So although we're not trying to impose any kind of rules and regulations that's new, they've always been there, we just want to put them back where it's been what we recognized. So my receptivity is to work with your board, the Planning Board, the ZBA, I'll be at the ZBA tomorrow, Town Council, Special Town Counsel, to see if there's a way that we can provide an amendment prior to town meeting where we can get full, you know, support. But I think the goal is to maintain what we knew forever, which is a quorum of four.
Thank you. That's all, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Peters? Yes? Karen?
So my question was a little bit along those lines, and Karen Muggeridge, and I am on Advisory, but asking a question independently because, as has been mentioned, we're meeting on this tomorrow night. I did watch the Planning Board meeting last night, and the impression that I got was that there was maybe not going to be a whole lot of receptivity to amendments to this or changing. And I wanted to get a little bit of clarification, because I've also, I'm confused as to how much amendment there can be given to a citizen's petition. So, and this will help as we have a discussion on Advisory and come to our recommendations on that. So clarification on amendments for a citizen's petition, and then there were a number of very excellent points made last night on the quorum being a supermajority and how that would be maintained. It's three versus four, obviously, that's the point of this. Whether or not going back to the 1974 verbiage is appropriate or not, I forget who made it, but there was some discussion or reference to whether or not iterations of the language on this between 2007 and 1974 maybe would have been better, and I believe it may have been you, Mr. Shea, who said if we postponed this to an annual town meeting rather than having it be rushed, it would allow for more consideration and maybe a better opportunity to have all the boards and committees give a better opportunity to look at and give the full consideration that this would deserve. So, and I think I may support that. The full cooperation that is being requested, or the spirit that the proponent is saying this is being presented in, I find being contradicted a little bit when I get the impression that saying, "We're going to pass this anyway," even if I hear that it's not recommended. So, I don't know. I guess questions on the citizen's petition, I guess, and with the opinion of special counsel not being totally in favor of it, if that would be a reason to maybe take a step back and come back to the table at another time with a better, a better option.
So what I believe you are thinking of, but please correct me if I'm wrong, is the rule that a citizen's petition must be inserted into the warrant as presented. So the folks who sign it, sign what's on the paper, and it can't come into the warrant altered in any way. As to amendments to it on the floor, that's a different issue.
Okay.
Okay, so I think, I think that's the distinction that you might have been thinking of. So the petition in the warrant, the special town meeting warrant that's been published, has the exact wording that was on the petition that folks signed.
Okay. All right.
Just to clarify one point, so yes, I was at the Planning Board here last night, and I don't think it was my intention to advocate that, that we postpone it now. I think the point I was trying to make, and if I didn't make it correctly, I'll try and make it now, is just that if this were something that were brought to an annual town meeting, this is likely something that would be discussed for many months. It would be the subject of, you know, multiple Advisory Committee meetings, multiple meetings by many boards, and with the tight, with the time constraints that we have with a special town meeting, we were locked into, you know, a public hearing that started just eight days before the special town meeting is actually taking place. So that's what otherwise would have been months' worth of work, we're trying to do within an eight-day time period, so it's a challenge that we have.
And my apologies if I gave the wrong impression. I think the more time given to something like this to come out with a better product is something that I would endorse, but if, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, so I apologize.
Ready?
Paul?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, Semino, just one more comment. I just want to make one point. So the comment that it's, everything's rushed, I just want to make clear, so we felt as citizens that it was rushed to remove the code from the 249. So what we've known forever disappeared, and so there might have been a lot of understanding and small meetings that people attended, but what we knew as the public, that was rushed. And so what we're asking for is just to return the words that were in there. So I think, I just wanted to clarify that. In our opinion, the rush was on the decision to remove it from the town code, and so we're requesting to maintain that. Thank you.
Well, for those that haven't seen the special counsel opinion, he describes it as illegal, unwise, overly cumbersome, and a few others. So I think that more time is needed to figure out exactly what the problem is and an appropriate solution. I don't think it's as easy as you're trying to say it is to put some words back in.
Article Two?
Okay. Article Two, to amend the zoning bylaw with reference to ZBA rules and regulations. The sponsor is Linda Perkins. Mr. Perkins, do you want to come up to the mic and? Just let me know, first of all, sir, do you intend to make a separate or specific presentation with regard to Article Two?
I'd give a short presentation.
I should, I should have said this at the beginning, because it bears on anybody who wants to, and when I say presentation, I mean like slides on the screen. Obviously, every proponent or opponent of an article can have a chance to talk.
That's not what I mean. I just mean my opportunity to talk.
Fair enough, fair enough. So if it is slides on a screen, we will, what day is the town meeting? It's Tuesday? So we will, I will impose a similar time, advanced time, to get things into the IT guys and get things ready, to have presentations submitted by Thursday, close of business. Friday's a short day for the staff, and then we have Monday, and that's it. And I do like to get them over there and make sure that everything looks right, so that when we get to specialty, when we actually get to the town meeting floor, we're flowing. So, so far then, it's just you, Ms. Houlihan, in terms of, is that, is that, any concerns there? Okay, Thursday at the end of the day? Thank you very much. And yours will just be verbal, so please, please continue, sir. Sorry.
Okay. So this is a citizen's petition, and I didn't have any legal advice on it. The intent of this was not mean-spirited to keep the ZBA from being able to do their business. The intent was about supporting the quorum article. The concern that I had was that the ZBA is able to set their own rules, would they be able to unwind Article One, for example? Now, this may be misinformed, and I would like to know if that would be the case, that once an article like Article One is made a rule, made a part of the town law, does it then stay in town law until the town meeting changes it again?
So that's the distinction, and I'll let Town Council speak to this, but if, my understanding is if Article One is passed as a zoning bylaw change, the ZBA on its own does not have the power to unwind that. It would take town meeting to unwind that, but can you confirm or speak otherwise to that, counsel?
Regrettably, Mr. Moderator, again, given my involvement in pending litigation, I cannot comment on any of that as it relates in significant part to that litigation.
If, if that turned out to be the, if, for what I just said turned out to be true, Mr. Perkins, I suspect you would be in a position to withdraw Article Two. Obviously, we'd have to convince you of that at some point between now and then.
I'm open to that.
Or on the floor, when Mr. Tallerman is available.
I am open to that. Also, if I'm not convinced of that, I'm not interested, and I don't think anyone's interested in forcing minutiae to have to go in front of town meeting, ZBA minutia regulations. What I'm looking at is there were rules in the, that appeared to be in the town bylaws, it was very confusing, that were set first in 1974, changed in 2007, 2011, 2017. That's not a frequent change of these kind of rules. Those are the kind of rules I'm interested in, not, you know, what are the purchasing rules for paper clips, that kind of thing.
Understood.
So if, if there were some amendment that would kind of specify that more clearly, I'd be open to that as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. And feel free to stay there in case there are questions, but I first want to establish whether there's anybody in the room, or anyone knows of anybody who intends to make an actual presentation in opposition to Article Two.
Yeah. So, Paul, we anticipate that special counsel will also address this.
Do you know if he's got slides on the screen, or he wants to speak to it?
I think he's simply going to speak to it.
Same with Article One, by the way?
Same with Article One.
Okay. Yep, that's fine. Do you want to open it up to your board, Brian?
Sure. Any questions?
How did this start?
Does not appear, so.
Adrian, are you, are you going to take up everything tomorrow, as you indicated for the first one?
Yes.
Anything else from anybody on Article Two? All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Article Three, zoning bylaw with respect to amending the appeal process. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Presentation? Slides on the screen?
Ms. Brascio.
Actually, I have a question of the board for that. I know at the Planning Board meeting last night, Mrs. Luttrell had spoken to the board about doing a small presentation. We had spoken about that, and I would like to partake with the board's indulgence in that presentation, along with Mrs. Luttrell. We anticipate, and Mimi, if you have anything to say, I don't, Paul, I don't anticipate a large presentation, but I guess.
It'll be no more than two hours.
But again, the board has, I would assume the board would have to be in favor of my giving a presentation in favor of this article with Mrs. Luttrell.
That is perfectly fine with me as well. Others?
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Okay. Now, Mimi, I guess, the question.
You guys got a fight over the five minutes.
No, it's fine. I don't anticipate it. The only problem we would ask or indulge, Mr. Moderator, is getting it done Thursday based on work schedules would be extremely tough. Mimi and I had planned on meeting Friday afternoon, and again, we don't anticipate anything more than a couple of slides.
If it's just going to be a couple of slides.
Mimi, you can give your thoughts on that as well.
Yeah, I don't expect.
Sorry.
I don't expect it to be more than a few slides.
Okay. So, I mean, this mainly, you know, this mainly affects Tom Laflamme in terms of putting the IT piece of it together. You know, I hate to take advantage of Tom, but I will in this case, because I know he's amenable to that, and Tom will work, you know, when we need to, when we need him to work. So I'll let him know. Is he, he's not here, is he? Okay, so that's fine.
Thank you.
Ms. Brascio, would you be okay making the motion from the floor on behalf of the board as well, or would you prefer?
Sure. No, that's fine.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just a quick point. This particular article is coming back under the Zoning Act, Chapter 48, Section Five, but as I indicated previously, it requires the recommendation of the Planning Board and a report that basically indicates to the town meeting the reason why it should be coming back, and I'm presuming that the Planning Board is. why it should be coming back. And I'm presuming that the planning board is doing that before next week.
So I, it's a very important point.
Very important, condition precedent.
It is a condition precedent, as we like to say. That is, if the planning board does not support this article, it will not come to town meeting floor, because it has been considered at a recent town meeting. I happen to attend their meeting last night, and I don't believe they are, well, why am I talking? You should talk, Ms. Luttrell. But your next meeting is the evening of town meeting. Am I correct about that?
That's correct. I know the board was in support of this article. I don't know if we took a formal vote in...
I don't think you did. Again, only speaking because I was there. But I do think it was, you unanimously were in support as a board, each member was, but I think you, it was ultimately postponed to the twenty-second.
Yeah, it was continued to the twenty-second.
Yeah.
I can, I can contact the chair tomorrow.
I don't mean to put you on the spot on that, but it's just that it's very important that a explicit recommendation be made by the planning board and a report that supports the article. That is the, that is the segue to get it back before the town meeting.
Okay.
State law?
State law. So counsel, so essentially if that report doesn't come forth, then the motion would be indefinite postponement on the floor?
That would be, that would be your only option.
I, I, I don't know.
Well, you've got to dispose of the article.
I, you're right. You're right. The better practice may have been to get that answer and not have it in the warrant, but we didn't have a chance to do that.
I think we get back to the time.
Understood.
The time issue.
So that's fine. All right. Ryan, anything more from your board on Article three?
I don't believe so. No.
Anybody else? Okay, two-thirds vote, town, as was Article two, I didn't mention that. All right, we'll move on to Article four, Calander Field Improvements, Ms. Lavalt. You will or will not be making a presentation, ma'am?
Yes, much shorter this time, just a couple slides.
And you yourself?
Yes, but would like to ask your permission and potentially also involve Arthur Eddy, again, our consultant on the effort to also speak during that five-minute period.
So just tell me quickly, what, how did he, I assume he's not a, he's not a town voter? He's not a resident of town?
No, no. He was part of Birchwood Design Group, who was, you know, performed the actual study and can speak to the details of the project.
Do you want him to speak as part of your presentation, or do you want him to be available to answer if there are questions from the floor?
At this point in time, I'll say I'd like him to speak. We'll firm that up this week.
Okay. What's his last name?
Eddy, E-D-D-Y.
Okay. No issue there. Brian?
Any questions, comments? Ms. Fannin?
I would like to have at least one slide available for the audience. I've asked Lisa to help me put it together. We'll be here in the town hall tomorrow. If it's not, if we determine it's not necessary, then you will not see it.
Okay.
Financial slide.
I understand.
Okay. It's no secret.
But I assume you want to present that slide after Ms. Lavalt's presentation? In other words, you want me to come to you next?
Please.
Yes, will do. Unless you don't bring it. Anybody else?
Comments? Questions? Yes, Ms. Braschio.
Comments and questions, please. And I don't know, Ms. Lavalt, if you know the answer to this. I know Ms. Gallagher's here, and maybe she can answer it. I'd like to know if there's going to be a legal easement is going to be obtained from Salf regarding piping going through their property. And if so, who's going to be financially responsible going forward on any issues that may arise down the road of said piping, based on, again, twenty years down the road or whatever? So Karen, I don't know if you can answer that question, or even town council, if a legal easement would be required, if Salf was willing to have work done.
If, basically, if the property lines where Salf thinks it is, they currently already have drainage system on their property. So it was granted to them with that system on there. When we had meeting yesterday, and Salf was there, he was very noncommittal about the fact that whether or not we could, basically because water became channelized, somebody dug a trench across Salf's property. I don't know if it was Salf, I don't know who it was, but Salf never did anything to fix that. There's really no way to fill that in at this point and not have the water come back down it. So we need to intercept it. We can intercept it on our own property, but Salf is then creating an issue for us by not letting us do it, and they have to fix their own problems. So if they're not willing to work with us, they got that land for free. It's soft land. We do a ton of work for them through the town, because they have no money, and they don't ever do a lot of, like, a lot of stuff. If they need something with equipment, they need to come to us. So, you know, they do a lot of stuff personally, like, you know, donations-wise. So I just, I don't see that as being something that they should try to stop. The basin up at Carriage Hill is, has been maintained properly, and it's really the trench that's causing us the issue at this point.
Okay, well, maybe I didn't ask my question the right way. So if Salf's agreeable, and we go in and do some work on the hill to help stabilize our piping, to channel however the water may be, is a easement going to be required for that, an easement that has to be recorded? And again, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, and maybe town council.
I don't know. I would assume, because we would have to, it's, we don't have one currently, and they never asked for one originally, but I would assume to keep it clean, we're supposed to?
Well, let me, let me see if I can get some information. We would be entering Salf property to do an improvement? Is that the case?
Yeah, and to do maintenance, because they're not going to be able to maintain the piece of the drainage that, which is currently on their property if the property lines are where they think they are.
Would the maintenance be one-time only, or would this be continuous?
It should be continuous.
Okay. The best device would be actually a recorded easement, which would require town meeting approval. The other option is a simple license, which is not granting an interest in real estate, but given the continuing need, a license may not work.
Okay. And oftentimes, when we do these with the town, we usually have the items in place, and then we get the easements after the fact. So that's not unusual, I know, when we've done it, except for the maintenance. I think that's the only time I've done them first.
There are still so many unanswered questions about this, as far as the erosion control, the stormwater management. What has the town done? What are we not doing? Who's going to cover the legal expenses? Is that going to come out of this warrant article, even though there's a contingency in it? I'm getting a little frustrated, because I don't see team playing here. We, you had a very successful town meeting with three warrant articles. Two of them did not pass. And I understand there's a long-range proposal and plan and everything, but this is not how we run government. I put, there was a request from the seniors to put a senior center, some of money out there, $400,000. That wasn't put on the warrant article. And this board gave recreation a pass to put your articles on there. Even though we had some hesitation, we did it. And now it seems like we can't satisfy recreation. Four years ago, I had families in this town ask me how to put it forward to town meeting, a petition article on a full-time, full-day kindergarten. And I cautioned them not to do that. And here we are, still talking. My daughter's been out of school for thirty years. She was in the first full-day junior first grade. They did it for one year, because we were looking at half-day kindergarten. We are not even funding the essential of a half-day kindergarten class, and yet we're running town meeting on petition articles. I'm getting a little concerned that that's going to be the way we're going to go down. And I caution recreation. I know you have the support, but you do not want this government managed this way. Money's very tight. I brought up Fay Fields over in Marlboro area, Maple Street, I believe it's Maple Street, asked what the status was of that. And as soon as I asked the question, Southbury Youth Soccer Association took that down. It went back up with a very small one paragraph. We're still working on it. It was changed again in April. We will make everyone aware of what we're doing mid-April, which tells me you're waiting for town meeting to happen. So I guess my question is, are you still working with Fay Field on the Marlboro line, or is this going to be the substitute? Because if you had the money to fund that, you have the money to fund some of this.
REC was never, just to clarify, working with the Fay, the Fay Fields.
Southbury Youth.
Southbury Youth Soccer Association was.
Right. Explain what Southbury Youth Soccer Association is, since we're building all these fields, and how much per student goes to Southbury Recreation?
So I'm Colin Hines from Southbury Youth Soccer. I'm the president.
Nice to meet you.
I'm sorry?
I said, nice to meet you.
You too. So we are still working, and we have discussions with the Fay School about the planned Mill Street field. We are continuing to try to work the model, the financial model, to make it work. Our numbers have been declining over the last probably five years or so. So where, as before, that model looked really good and really tight, now we're just trying to make sure we're really conservative about our spend. So that's what we've been dealing with. So yes, we wrote a clarification on our website, because we wanted to clarify where we were at that time. And we will continue to write clarifications as we learn more information. This was, this was our, this plan, this project that we were working with Fay on had nothing to do with recreation. We certainly worked with Doreen very closely in the REC commission, but it was, there was no real relationship as far as dollars, transferring, anything like that. This was a, this was fully sponsored by Southbury Youth Soccer, working with Fay.
And Southbury Youth Soccer has a relationship with the Recreation Commission for these fields, correct?
Correct, correct. For when you say "these fields," you mean...
All the fields that are being proposed, you want to use them as a group.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's my point. If the one in Marlboro, Fay School field was on track, would you need these fields?
Absolutely.
Everyone, you just said your numbers were declining.
They are. We are in the, I'm sorry?
I said...
Would you like me to respond to that, or not?
You can respond to it, but I'm just very concerned, and we all should be as taxpayers, that this is how government's going to be run. That's the one thing we all have in common. We're all taxpayers.
That's fair. We need fields. We're trying to take multiple approaches to best satisfy our needs. The Fay Field is one with Southbury Youth Soccer, this is another.
And we need full-time, full-day kindergarten, too, which we can't afford.
I can't speak to that. I can speak to our needs.
Taxpayer I am.
I'm speaking to our needs, and as a representative of Southbury Soccer. Thank you.
I'd also, is it okay to respond? We, you know, the months leading up to the town meeting, we worked and presented at advisory, the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, understanding that moving forward with the articles was outside the norm of the plan. We have committed, and I think have shown, that we're committed to working going forward to try to get into that capital plan. But again, as we discussed at the town meeting, at those various meetings, and we'll discuss again at the upcoming special town meeting, we got the results of the study, and it became apparent we had some very immediate needs that we need to start to address, and a long path ahead to be able to do it. There's, we're concerned about the safety, the ongoing safety of the field. These have been neglected for a long time. And so that's why we chose to say, you know what, let's present this information to the town and let them decide. We've been, facts have been put in front of us that these towns need to be addressed, these, excuse me, fields need to be addressed immediately. So we chose to go this route, to ask folks to consider an exception to that planning process, which, again, we respect that ultimately, that's the plan that we're committed to working, to be part of. So no, I agree with you that it's not our intention to not try to work and put these items into the capital plan so we can achieve our goals of getting to a maintenance cycle and correcting very long overdue issues with Southbury's facilities.
Could this wait till April?
We, in April, it's likely that we could have additional items that we need to consider.
Could this article wait till April?
I guess my point, our position is why, why wait till April?
You know, Ms. Braschio and I had meetings with the people involved recently, and I guess I wouldn't agree that there's many questions that are up in the air. I think it's fairly simple and straightforward, and I do think that the important players are working together. I think Carriage Hill is doing everything it's supposed to do and will continue to. And I think our DPW has a plan that will solve the problem. And if Salf will cooperate, it would be ideal, but they don't have to. So...
Who doesn't have to?
Salf.
But you don't want that conversation on town meeting floor, that parties don't agree. That's, that's my point. Can it wait till April?
It's not a question of agreeing or not. It's been analyzed, there's a plan, and that will solve the problem. They have a plan to solve the drainage problem, and then we'll do the work on the field.
If I may just add, Mr. Schifrin, from the meeting, it was a very good meeting that we had, and I think everybody's in the spirit of wanting to work together, but obviously Carriage Hill and/or Salf hasn't met with their boards either. So general conversations we may have had, and in the spirit of working together, I have concern about going forward to town meeting without hearing from their positions of the boards. I would hate to tell the citizens something, and then one or two of the parties that met come back with needing additional information, or I have a concern for that. I mean, I think that the meeting was very good, and I think it was very positive, and it was a huge first step in bringing everybody together. And I think we are all on the same page. But at the end of the day, Carriage Hill hasn't met with their board, and I understand that can't happen till at least next week. And Salf just had their annual meeting, and I don't believe they can meet until later in the month. So the conversations that we had, while positive, we don't know the actual outcome of the votes of either of the boards of the parties involved. So I would hesitate a little bit on that. And again, Mr. Schifrin, obviously, you may have a different interpretation of that as well, but...
And just not sure, like, the vote for what?
Well, Carriage Hill had said they were going to go to their board. They can't say as far as additional maintenance on the...
The DPW looked at the basin that is by the field, and nothing is needed from Carriage Hill.
Could I ask who was at the meeting?
Salf, Carriage Hill, their management, landscaper, Ms. Braschio, and myself. Oh, and Karen, sorry.
Oh, she's raising her hand.
I'd also just like to clarify that. I agree. I think that the day of town meeting, a letter was presented, the day of town meeting, we were handed a letter with the position of others who raised concerns and questions. So not much of a chance to respond. I do believe, and it's our intention coming into the meeting, to address each of those concerns, to make sure it's clear where there's dependencies between these two conversations and where there's not, where work can happen concurrently, in our belief. We're confident in the design discussions that we've had over and over and over with DPW and the consultant. I think we just need to clarify for folks, because any time new information's presented the day of, it's going to cause confusion. And I think we can come back and clarify, to your point, what the questions were that were raised, what we believe we can address, if there are open questions, and what's the impact of the decision on those, one way or another. It's our belief that these can move forward concurrently. Delaying anymore on approving the funding to start the design, so we can get into more detail and really understand the drainage, I don't see the benefit in waiting any longer.
If I may just add, I think... If I may just add, I think this board and the town has always been very supportive of recreation. I don't think it's a matter of not supporting recreation. While we're having this discussion, I'll share with you a concern that I have. And it's a process question, so it's, for my board as well. A citizen's petition is a loud method of getting a warrant article to town meeting. I support citizens' petitions except when it comes to a capital-related and budget item. We have a budget process in place for that. My concern is that our goal and message as selectmen should be consistent. And we should always impress upon our departments, our boards, committees, and commissions to work in the spirit of coordination, collaboration, and being a team, working together by the same standards. I worry that what this does by coming forward this way is now having our boards, commissions, committees, departments competing with citizens' petition for funding items. At the end of the day, we all need to follow the same process that allows us to work together in fairness to all requests and needs and playing on the same field. Especially in this case, I have concern that when one specific group is benefiting by bypassing a process that everyone else is expected to use. Which leads me to wonder if going forward with other boards, will other boards, committees, and commissions subvert the capital process in favor of funding by a citizen's petition in a vote of town meeting? An instant vote, instant funding. We're going down uncharted territory here. And we need to be careful of the precedent as a town that we are setting and executive officers of the town. It is our responsibility to set the processes that will best protect and serve the taxpayers and that are fair to all. I worry that if this is going to be a trend of capital items, that the stability of the budget process and the AAA bonding that we have going forward, that our finance team has done a tremendous job of getting and maintaining, will suffer. Mr. Purple, can I ask, do you have a copy of the future capital needs for recreation?
So I have a draft copy that was provided to me. I can't remember what meeting it was. So I have that draft copy. All of the capital improvements are pretty much stacked into the first three years, 19, 20, and 21. So I have asked for recreation to provide me kind of a list telling us which ones are the ones that, you know, have the priorities so that if we're looking to try and apply those into the capital budget so that everything can be done fairly with other departments, so that we're not funding everything for one department or we're trying to, you know, have to delay things based on that. So as soon as we get something like that, then I think we can better, you know, put a, put a true capital plan together which incorporates recreation into the other capital needs.
And I look forward, Kristin, I look forward to that happening. You know, my concern is, as a town in doing this, do we now, have we now opened the door to maybe the senior center that's not happy waiting two years for their improvements? For the library that has waited and got put off for the $95,000 they needed? I just want to make sure that this board is consistent going forward. And again, it's not you, because, to be clear, and again, I just want to be clear, and I wrote this down so I could make sure that I said this. This article and recreation has used a process that's available to bring an article forward. And it's your right to do so. So I'm not saying you didn't have the right to do this. I just worry about the precedent and what the stance of this board is going to be going forward in fairness for everybody. So, and you may hear some of those same comments. I've heard a lot of these comments from people. So you may hear some of them. So this was our opportunity to speak to you before town meeting, so... And again, it has nothing to do with not supporting. Had this come forward as a warrant article, what I just said to you, I wouldn't have said. So again, it's fairness and process. Everybody should be by the same standard and the same process. My opinion, I don't speak for the full board, obviously. I can only speak with the concerns that I have. So, thank you.
I'd just like to add again, I, we respect planning. That's what I do for a living, trust me. And I also understand though, sometimes new information's presented, and you have to consider exceptions to that plan. We got the study done. We did not have the study before. We did not understand all that was required to get into the maintenance cycle, nor the poor condition of our current fields. So we wanted to bring it to the town. That's what all this is, is bringing it to the town to let them decide if they want to consider allowing this into the plan post its completion. We are not doing this because we didn't like the answer. We didn't like this because we were, didn't want to wait around. This is not about aesthetics. This is about fixing our town property amongst many considerations involved, involved being able to keep the fields open and being able to keep them safe. So again, I just want folks to understand that is why we opted this year to put these items forward so we could get this long overdue process started. And we just could not do that before without the creation, the completion of that study.
And I appreciate that. And I appreciate the point you just made, because that was one of the first times, I think, that I've heard it put that way. So I appreciate that. I do have one, one other follow-up question, if I may. And again, Mr. Purple, this may come to you. It's on the bonding, the funding for this. This, am I correct in understanding that this, the funding for this has got to be paid all within one year because the budget cycle is closed? No, okay.
No.
So it can be bonded over?
It can be bonded for a number of years.
It can be, okay.
So, and that would be the recommendation of the finance director as to the number of years.
That's fine. That was a question I had. I wasn't sure of the answer on, so, thank you.
I just don't want to confuse the issues with the article and the problems with the process. I think the issues with the article are rather simple and straightforward. And the questions have been answered. I get that there's a problem with the process that some people have. But, you know, my opinion on that, and I was relatively new to this board going into the budget process and was extremely impressed with the town administrator, financial team, how they pull it together. The one answer I would have or critique of this recreation using articles is I think we somehow need to be more receptive to any group that has this widespread support for articles that aren't in the regular capital project budget. And I don't think that there is any, seems to be any flexibility there. And if people have the, if groups have the support of the people, I just think we need to be more receptive. Not that people doing this is somehow bad government. It's just a different way of doing it. And I think we need to appreciate that and deal with it. Thank you.
I have to comment on that one. I've been going to town meetings since 1971, and we all have individual interest. We had a town meeting. I believe we had over 200 people there. Presentations from all quarters on every article. And the, the individuals that are interested in those articles stayed for the entire articles, all three of them. And if they left, it was their choosing. No one forced them to leave. They knew what was there. I'm actually asking, asking for the counts from the town clerk's office. Again, I'm going back to the process. We have town meeting, an annual town meeting that manages this town financially. That's the question here. Is this what we want to be the new standard? If you don't get what you want, you do this. And I, first, I have another statement, and I'm going to make it. I'm getting really concerned we're overextending a single department here. Since, since 2014, we have spent $1.4 million on recreation articles. Roughly, if my numbers are right, $800,000 has not been spent yet because we haven't started some of these projects. There is a concern. We just passed three or four, three articles at town meeting. We haven't even started. We're going to put the money aside when there are other departments looking for these funds. It's not who deserves it, it's how are we managing it? And we're overextending a department head.
So I'd just like to address each of those points. So first of all, with all due respect, again, the day of town meeting, the day of, a lengthy letter was sent that introduced a lot of, that contradicted the consultant that the town hired. That raised a lot of questions to people, and I would argue created confusion successfully. We just want the opportunity to appropriately address that. So that's one reason. It's not that we did not like the answer. And obviously, we didn't like the answer. But that's not why we're back. We would have accepted it if, I think that, again, there was a lot introduced the day of with no opportunity to react. The second thing I'll say about, and this ties into the next petition, the people who opted to stay could have. The vote was at 10:35 or something like that at night. There was people who made them leave, children. If you have babysitters, if you have kids in that gym, guess what? You do have to leave. And an interesting statistic, and I wasn't going to bring it up, we got the majority of the vote for that. I think it was like 60%. We lost two-thirds by 16 votes. 105 people had left. So I do think that, and that's why the next article we're bringing forward, I do think that people don't quite have the liberty to stay till 10:35, 11 o'clock, 11:30 at night to vote on some of these things. So that certainly, I think, is an interesting statistic to say, had those questions not been raised the day of and had we been more adequately prepared to respond to them, would that have swayed 16 people? I don't know. But that's not the primary person, reason we're coming forward, the numbers. It's about the ability to address the concerns that were raised sufficiently. And because of the overwhelming response we've received from outs, people outside the commission to want to bring it back and clarify some of those items.
Is that what the board?
Yep.
Yes.
Are you getting anything from you or your, maybe we're skin mask as well as...
So apparently, we are in official meeting. So my comments before could be considered official. This is a very odd format and, for me, so asking advisory questions is a little bit different.
Just to clarify, Ms. Moderator, I didn't ask any questions. I simply asked if anybody had any comment and whether maybe your committee did, based on a meeting or deliberation you might have had. You don't, you don't have to be up there. I'm not...
No, we do, because this is the only time that we, as advisory, have the opportunity to ask a question on these warrant articles. And I'm prefacing that by saying it's very awkward and I think doing a disservice to our mission as advisory. But I just, it's a comment, and I'll make it short. With the REC articles that were presented mostly at the main town meeting, some were in their entirety, some were assessments of different fields. And I think it would have been very helpful to get a presentation of if the assessment, and again, through the chair to Kristin, of what if the assessment of the field was chosen to go ahead, and I think it was 10% of, of the cost, on one of the fields, I believe it was $2 million, would have been the expenditure to go ahead and carry out the upgrades. So what we were looking at, I believe, if all the warrant articles had passed, was roughly $750,000. But if those, those warrant articles that were assessments of fields were then approved to go and be built, the incremental cost would have been enormously greater. So I guess my point is that adding, giving a picture of what that entire cost would have been would have been very helpful, because I don't think people, you know, we're overwhelmed a little bit by the amount of money that we did look at, and we picked and chose what to go ahead with. But that's a fraction of what the cost would be to go ahead with what you're saying we desperately need as a community. So going forward for next time, when, you know, these are going to be brought up again, that total picture would be very, very helpful, from an advisory standpoint. And I also think from the standpoint of people in the community. So, and just as a last point, Kristin, I haven't supported everything you've put forward, but you have done an incredible job promoting your, what you have done, so...
Okay, well, thank you for that. And the points noted, I just want to make sure that folks know that the article being discussed right now, calender, is not, it's an all-in. It's not a design cost. It's the cost of the repairs.
Mr. Peters?
Mr. Moderator, just on a point of order, we did have a, post our meeting as a joint meeting where we are, where the members of advisory can also ask questions. We do not deliberate here tonight. That we will do tomorrow night. So I'm just, just to make sure that...
So you're in session right now?
Yeah.
Sure.
But these are questions are okay tonight. We are in...
We are.
And I, and I assume if you wanted Ms. Laval at your meeting tomorrow, she'd be happy to attend it. So, I didn't ask whether there's anybody in the room or that, or is anyone is otherwise aware of an actual presentation in opposition to Article 4. And finally, town council, you'll confirm this is a borrowing article, so it's a two-thirds vote.
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I had also planned to be getting more information to support the slides and would also like, will also be a minimal amount of slides. Would also like for that same extension till Friday, if possible.
Well, what do you mean by minimal?
I don't think people want to hear that. Two, two to three. One reiterating, because I do think it's important, this, this discussion around the capital planning, I know that it came up again at the candidates' night. We weren't there unfortunately to address it. I do, one slide on the questions that were raised, and potentially some slides with pictures.
Ms. Lahan, do you, do you know approximately how many slides you're going to have? I'm going to extend the deadline to Friday for everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. But I will, I will, I mean, I hope, you know, this gets broadcast a few times between now and then. Because if I, we can't get them by Friday, I'm not going to put Tom through the wringer on Monday. So if they don't come in on Friday, I'm not going to have them up there. You're going to do it verbally. I just think that's fair to everybody.
Agreed.
So appreciate your indulgence on that. All right. Anything else on Article 4? Okay, thank you very much. Article 5, bylaw to amend the date and time of annual town meeting. This is also proposed by Ms. Laval.
At this point in time, I'll say that we may have one slide. That may change. It might be that I'm just be, well, actually, myself or, I guess that's a question for you. Can we confirm by Friday if somebody else may be speaking to this particular article?
Wait, I didn't follow that. So can you please repeat that, please?
At this point in time, I'll say that I will be speaking to it with one slide. But there's a potential, could we change that by Friday, the person who would actually be speaking?
Okay, but not, not the time. Five minutes tops, one slide. It might just be somebody else other than you. Who might it otherwise be?
There is a lot of different citizens involved in the discussion.
Okay. All right. Well, that's something we want to confirm by Friday also. Do you want to speak briefly to the substance?
This one's fairly straightforward. I think I spoke to it a little bit. I think in general, we know, we did a town meeting study that, you know, I think everyone would agree that we'd like to see more participation in town meeting. But I also think that the time itself, you know, again, for many demographics, it's certainly not just parents. That proves to be very challenging. Anyone who works, anyone who might not be able to drive at night. Looking at towns around us, and there's now many within Massachusetts, as I've learned more, it would seem that a Saturday afternoon is a process that actually has been in place for many years at town, in some towns, as I've been learning. In other towns, Westboro, they've been doing it for about 10 years. There is a time period in the March... There is a time period in the March timeframe where many of these towns target it. It happens to fall in between a lot of the recreational sporting seasons, so another reason why we would suggest perhaps move it up a bit. We're basically suggesting that we should create an environment that as many citizens as possible can participate in.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the room or who knows of anybody else who may present in opposition to Article Town Council, this is, I take it this is just a.
General bylaw.
It's a general bylaw, it's not a zoning bylaw, so a majority vote.
Majority.
All right. Brian, do you want to take your board through it?
Yeah. So are any questions, comments that the board has? Ms. Braschio.
Just a quick comment. Kristin, have you seen the study that was done for the town meeting review committee? They had taken quite a bit of time and reviewed this.
Yes.
I think you'll find some of the information in here, very useful.
Absolutely.
So I would recommend, if you haven't got a copy of it, to get a copy and.
No, I haven't. I've actually spoken with a member of the committee and we actually have a follow-up discussion also planned.
Okay, thank you.
This is a good, I'm sorry to interrupt, Brian, but it's a good time, because Ms. Braschio just mentioned, it's a good time for me to mention that we did have an ad hoc committee appointed by the moderator and the board of selectmen. I want to say now in 2016, but I'll get that wrong. Their report, their summary conclusions and a lot of additional information, as Ms. Braschio just alluded to, is posted at least, I know for a fact, on the moderator page of the town meeting website. It may be elsewhere, but it's accessible for those that are interested in this topic. Sorry, go ahead.
Other comments?
Did you specifically consider but not go with Saturday morning time to kind of guarantee that it could be done in one day?
I would say we were following largely in the footsteps of the town of Westboro. I also think that in the morning, there's various other commitments that folks tend to attend to. So that was certainly, I would say, the main driver in terms of following the footsteps of those communities around us.
Can I ask the follow-up?
Yes, please.
Just a follow-up to what Brian said. I know the concern in doing this was town meeting running late and whatnot. So I would hope, I understand Westboro does it that way, but in consideration of if it doesn't get done and you have to come back from at seven o'clock, you could still be there till eleven o'clock and you'd still be faced with the same challenge that you're trying to work through. So if you would just, again, just something to consider when, you know, for the timeframes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's, we're ever going to find a perfect solution as long as town meeting exists. I mean.
Agreed.
That's pretty much going to be it. And so I think we're, the hope is it's minimized the risk of that and it's a Saturday.
That's it?
Is that it? Anybody on the floor? Brian, in terms of your board and your positions on all of the articles we discussed tonight, that's something that we will want to have in time to get them on, into the system so that they'll be projected as we, so I forget when your next meeting is, when you're intending to do that.
So I think that we are planning to meet the night before, earlier in the evening of town meeting.
You haven't said it yet?
No. We haven't said it, but that was the intent to meet as we typically do in advance of the town meeting.
Yeah, there's an advance and then there's an advance. I mean, it's an hour in advance. It doesn't really help me.
Oh, no.
But if that's what it is, I understand. I'm just asking the question. All right, well, as soon as you set that, if you can let me know.
I absolutely can.
I think that's all I have for this.
Okay.
Appreciate everybody's participation. I don't know if there's more on your agenda or not, Brian, but take it away.
Yep, thank you. So that concludes our scheduled appointments for tonight. Move to reports, chairman's report. I do not have anything. Actually, just one comment that was, I did attend the planning board meeting last night. I think I touched base with you on this, Mr. Purple, that Ms. Davis had spoken with our board in December of last year about the 5G communications. She, partly as a recommendation that our board made to have discussions with the planning board, she met with the planning board last night as well, gave an excellent presentation. And planning board is, appears to be interested in moving forward with, seeing if there's modifications to the zoning bylaws that could possibly take place. I know one of the things that we had discussed at our meeting was having Mr. Purple follow up with Mass Municipal and other agencies to see if there are other communities that are addressing this in any way and if they have already gone through town meeting process and perhaps attorney general, attorney general review of bylaw modifications or zoning changes if there's examples that we might be able to follow as well. So I just request that you continue to follow up with those agencies.
Sure. So, yeah, so I've been in touch with MMA and John Robertson, who follows a lot of these policy issues for communities across the state. Nothing tangible back yet, but will continue to follow to see if there is, you know, again, some community who's on the front side of the wave. That makes council less nervous when we go ahead and do things like that, so I will, I'll continue to follow that.
Okay. There were a couple of communities that she referenced that seemed to have action before town meetings this year or in the works.
Okay.
So we can get the updated copy of the presentation that Ms. Davis presented. We can look at those.
Okay.
That's all I have. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick items. One, the cable television committee got themselves situated and met, reorganized for the first time. Mr. Rooney will be chairing that effort. As you recall, it took us quite a while and a lot of effort to get three people onto the committee of a five-person committee so that they could meet. This committee is necessary for us to begin negotiations with our three cable providers. Verizon is up for renewal next year, followed by Charter and then Comcast in '21, so they come in three successive years. We, as with most other communities, have used the same person for cable attorney to come in and help you with these negotiations. They're doing this all the time. They understand the issues. They're on top of these things. And unfortunately, the gentleman has retired from the last time that we did these. So I've been reaching out to my peers. We do have a council that we have looked at based on their experience and based on referrals from other communities who have just finished their cable negotiations. I wanted to inform you tonight that I didn't get this on the agenda. I had this epiphany at the last moment that I can't sign this. You appoint counsel. So I will be putting this on the agenda for the meeting, the night of town meeting, so that the board can authorize counsel to move forward on these and begin these negotiations. We're in a little bit of a time crunch with regards to Verizon and, but, you know, those three contracts will get done hopefully very quickly from that, from that point on. One other item, and, you know, usually I like to bring good news and everything and that. I don't always bring good news and this is one of them. I did notify you about this a little bit earlier, but I did get a note or a letter from Beth Rosenbloom that she is going to be resigning. I'm sorry, I said that, I said that wrong twice that I already. She is retiring from the town as a conservation agent. Her last day will be Friday, July 6th. She is going to be, you know, moving back to New York City and, you know, it's, like I said, it's with some regret that, you know, I have to accept this letter because Beth has really done a wonderful job, you know, I think for the town. I've known Beth for many years. I knew her, you know, when I worked in Ashland and she was, you know, an open space person and I'll be very honest, Beth and I didn't see eye to eye on a lot of things and on various projects and things like that. But coming here and seeing her as our administrator and the professionalism she brings to the position, the way that she's worked with our Conservation Commission, which I think is one of, you know, our better commissions in terms of the makeup and the way they get things done and I really, I'm sad to see her go. And, you know, it's going to be tough to fill those shoes and I know that the commission, you know, must have felt the same way when she made that announcement to them at their meeting the other night. So I did want to announce that. I did want to publicly acknowledge what a great member of our team she is and, you know, acknowledge that she will be missed to that. And, you know, we're going to have to start the process of looking to hire her replacement. So I will begin working with Mrs. Hale and with the Conservation Commission to get that process underway.
Thank you. Words well said. Beth will be missed. Consent agenda items, we've already covered agenda. Item number five. Any that board members want to hold?
One.
Hold number one, so I'll do two, a motion to approve consent agenda items two, three, and four. Two being accept New England Center for Children pilot payment of $52,036. Three, approve and sign MOU between Southborough South for Emergency Management Agency and St. Mark's School for Buses. Four, accept Fay School donation of $100,000 for public safety building. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, with special thanks to New England Center for Children and Fay School as well for their donations. Number one.
All right. I held this only because of the appearance of the meeting, the tape of the meeting that occurred. I want the public to be made aware that Mr. Bartolini had told the chairman before the meeting had even started and I was in the room, that his intention was not to seek reappointment. It had nothing to do with the decision of the board that evening. So I just wanted that to be on the record. How are we going to advertise this vacancy?
I guess we can discuss that in item.
Okay.
One, when we get to the other board and committee appointments.
All right, I'll make a motion then to accept the resignation of Leo Bartolini from the zoning board of appeals.
There's a second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Message unanimously. Other matters properly before the board, item number one, review of board and committee appointments for fiscal year 2019.
Mr. Chairman, we have, you have before you a list of all the board and committee members that are up for reappointment this year and for Mr. Schifrin and Ms. Braschio's benefit. Actually, not so much for Ms. Braschio's benefit, Mr. Schifrin's benefit more. The way that we've tried to do this last year and I believe the year before, just to give, give the board a little bit, take the pressure off of giving them something on the same night and saying you have to approve something. You know, what we've tried to do is we'll provide you the board and committee appointments this evening. The board can discuss where they may have issues or things you may want to see or not see or have more questions on. At your next meeting, you will have this on the consent agenda. And then if there are still things you want to do, you can pull that off. At the next meeting, you'll get then the list of the internal staff appointments for your consideration for the same type of review that we're going to do this evening and then at the meeting following that, the second meeting in June, that will be on the consent agenda. So we've tried to at least stretch this out a little bit so that the board, you know, has the ability to look at these, ask questions. If you want to hold certain items, there's things you want to change, we can do that at this point. So the list that you have in front of you, I want to make sure you had the most updated copy. It is a little bit different from the list that you had in your packet. Mr. Shea was asking what's different. I, you know, was told that Ms. Esposito prepared this and it is accurate as of this evening, so let's focus on, I guess, what we have and not what we, you know, what has been changed, because I'm not quite sure that I can delineate some of that to you. The items in green are the positions that you need to focus on for reappointment purposes. If there's a red vacancy, obviously that position is vacant within that board or committee. Items that are noted in yellow means that we've not yet received a response back from, we do send out things to the board and committee members, asking if they will be seeking reappointment or not. So if it's yellow, we've not heard a response back from them. If it is blue, blue essentially means that these people, that the member of the board or committee is not seeking reappointment and fortunately, I think we only have two of those through the document. One of those is on Conservation Commission, Lee Swigert, and also Dan Kalenda has said that he does not want to be on, the board rep on EDC anymore, or does not want to be on EDC, so that's going to leave a vacancy as to whether that's filled by another selectman or someone else. So I don't know that it makes much sense to run through this. It may be easier to answer questions or for the board to provide comments based on the information you have in front of you.
All right, I guess I will start.
Oh, I'm sorry. One quick thing, just to Mrs. Faniff's point, you will notice that obviously under ZBA there is a vacancy. The two alternate members, those are appointed on an annual basis and historically, and Mrs. Faniff knows this as well as anyone, historically, you know, when there is a vacancy on a permanent member, one of the alternate members is moved up. I do believe that there would be, there may be a letter coming from Mr. Dennington as the chair, giving at least his recommendation as to whether a member should be moved up and if so, who. I know that this board has done it differently in the time I've been here. There was some consideration, you did open it up to the alternates and there was other people who had applied and you gave some consideration in that respect. So it may be something you want to discuss tonight as to whether you want to move up an alternate, whether you want to wait for a letter from Mr. Dennington for that consideration or whether you're committed to at least moving an alternate into the full position and then we would, you know, at some point be seeking someone to fill the alternate position. So, I'm sorry.
Nope, okay. So with respect to ZBA, I'll stay on that one as you bring it up. You know, my personal preference would be to see one of the alternate members slide into the permanent slot, but certainly if there is correspondence that we're anticipating from Mr. Dennington, I personally would like to see that, to see if there is a recommendation for who he would recommend to slide into the permanent spot before we take action on that tonight. But that said, I think that, and there are a number of other key committees as well, not that they all aren't important, but I think it's, there ought to be a special effort made to advertise for the ZBA opening, to solicit input from the community for that. Conservation Commission, I would note as well. And I just want to make the overall comment that none of these committees can happen without volunteers in town stepping up and taking part of this. And I want to thank everybody who is on this list for giving back to the community and taking the time to do it. And to the couple who have requested that they not be reappointed, Ms. Swigert and, you know, Mr. Kalenda for EDC, I want to thank them very much for their, the service that they have provided on those committees and the town as a whole is grateful and benefited from their service. But Conservation Commission, that said, is now a committee that will have two vacancies as well. And with their importance to the community, I would like to see a special effort made to advertise those positions, those vacancies as well. I'm going to make one comment. So Historical Commission is another committee that has two vacancies on it. Personal opinion of mine, I, one of the two people that is seeking reappointment, I am not in favor of reappointing. I believe that everybody on the Historical Commission has done an excellent job fulfilling the charge that is required of that commission. They have all done an excellent job with that respect. One of the, I was presented with correspondence that one of the members, Mr. Wyssan, has sent to, not only to a person that was impacted and approached them due to the demolition delay issue, but there was also correspondence that he sent to, in a butter, to the property, which I thought was wholly inappropriate. It was threatening, it was intimidating and just was not in line with what behavior that we should accept. was intimidating, and just was not in line with what behavior that we should accept from anybody on a town board or commission. So just from a personal level, I would not be in favor of reappointment of that one individual.
I, I agree with everything you said. I would like if, I would like Mr. Wyssan to come before this board if his, since he wants to be reappointed, and ask him if he has given that any thought. But I'd like to, I'd like to invite him in.
No, and that's fine, and certainly would welcome him. And again, it's in no way, shape, or form a reflection on the work that he did and the positions that he had on that particular matter. It's just the tone that he took in the correspondence and the communication I thought was completely out of line, so. And he was approached about that, given the opportunity to apologize, he refused to do that, so.
If I can add one other thing too, that we may want to consider is, is a decorum policy for our boards and committees. We have guidelines for the public, maybe we should consider putting some guidelines in place as well for our boards and committees, so.
Yep.
Again, just something.
I think it's unfortunate that we would have to.
Well, I don't disagree, but I think with, with questions that have come up and may come up, that it's probably something we, not tonight, obviously, but just want to put on a back burner to actually give some thought to, that's all.
I have another question, if I may, Mr. Shea.
Go ahead.
I know this was updated today and no response is still highlighted in yellow. When did we ask all of our volunteers that we were looking for this information? I know I responded, but I can't remember when.
I believe it's been several weeks that this, that the requests have gone out.
Then I would suggest not reappointing anyone in yellow. Let them make the effort of coming in. Here, I know, I have a question of you, but.
Can I, can I just say something? It was requested that the form be sent back no later than May 9th. I sent it back May 8th and I have the email here with me. So why I showed up is no response, I don't know.
No, it's okay, I was going to ask you if that was your intention anyway.
Well, I don't know if that happened to other people too. I sent it back before the deadline and still showed up as no response.
If they have not responded by the deadline that we asked, then I'm asking that they be taking, taken off this list. All this does is create more paperwork, they have an obligation as well to get the, get back and respond. If they can't respond, then that tells me they have no interest anyway. So have, double check that.
So I don't, I don't doubt Ms. Lutrell's answer. So do we want to take her verbal and we'll change her yellow?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
No, we don't need proof. But if, if, if there are cases that that may exist, then I think we need to address it.
Any other comments?
I'm only, I'm only saying that, Brian, because the amount of work that goes into this with Lori and our staff doing it, I think we just need to really put a stake in the ground saying, you know, we, our expectations are very high, respond to us in some of these cases.
Understood, and we've certainly tightened the timeframe to be sworn in as well, so.
Thank you.
So just for clarification purposes, the appointments that you will make next week that'll be on the consent agenda will be everyone in green. And we will advertise the vacancies as discussed this evening and ensure that we, you know, we put, you know, a special plea out for some of these boards that are busy or, you know, Conservation, zoning board. But obviously, the only one that I have that I think you want to invite into your next meeting on June 5th would be Mr. Wyssan, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Are there, are there any committees we can dissolve here now?
Well, that's, that's your call, not mine, so, you know, look.
Is their charge completed?
Well, we always get, so I, I think the only one, I think, that jumps out is the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee because you agreed to extend them until June 30th. I, I don't know whether you want to continue, you know, continue them at this point. That's, you know, that's, that's a, that's a call of the board. I think Main Street Design Working Group was something that the board, it can, you know, wanted to continue through the Main Street project. At some point, maybe we need to take a look at their charge and make sure that it's correctly reflected for the next several years because things have changed slightly in, obviously where they are with the project. Golf Course Committee, I think we just need to make sure their charge is reflective because I think that that will change after the project is over, but I think it carries for the remaining, remainder of the year. That, that's really the only one, I think, that jumps out based on where the board has been in the past in terms of the CR, Golf, Golf Course CR Committee.
All right, it might be helpful if we see the charge then on the Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee and the Main Street Design Working Group. That way, if the charge needs to be changed, we can do it all at the same time.
Okay. I mean, does the board, you know, do you have any, you have, you know, a feeling as to what you want to do? I mean, does the board want to continue the CR Committee for the golf course beyond June 30?
I would have to see the charge again.
You can pull it up.
I don't have a computer, thank you.
I can read it to you. Okay.
I'm a paper person.
Yeah, no, I understand.
The reason I wanted to continue them before was because I just, if there were going to be changes made before we submitted it, I just wanted their opinion before we voted on the final thing.
Right. Okay.
When do you plan on doing the interviews for vacancies? If you get names or Mr. Dennington has a recommendation, when do you plan on doing that?
So if there's a recommendation from Mr. Dennington for, for, for the full position for next meeting, that will be brought to you, but that's not going to be included in the consent agenda. I think that's considered as a separate item. And as we have people come forward, I don't want to be trying to do this every meeting, we'll try to lump, you know, you know, three, four, five of them together. You know, we do, in all honesty, we have a policy on how we handle appointments. We don't necessarily follow it all the time. So, you know, we, we need, so we need to just, you know, like I said, understand, you know, what, what we're doing and how we're doing. You know, if we haven't seen somebody in, the board should be comfortable that, you know, that this is somebody that you want, you know, basically representing you because they are representing the town, you know, on these issues. It may be a small committee and everything and that, but, you know, they are putting a face, you know, a face on the town, so. Okay, off my soapbox.
It's key to have Mr. Dennington's recommendation.
Yes, I'll reach out, I'll reach out to him and see if he could have that to you.
And advertise.
Yes.
Do the people in yellow have a couple of days to get back to you?
They had a couple of days.
Oh, I know that, but.
So I guess, as I look at the list, I know there's one name there who had a sudden unexpected death in the family as well. Perhaps we could make one more outreach to that individual that may have getting, responding in a timely manner to this effort.
Well, if you're going to reach out to one, then you have to reach out to all of them.
I mean, if somebody responds before the agenda and packets put out, they could be updated, right?
You have, so to Brian's point, I think that you've got, you know, if I, if two people respond, that takes care of, I think, five yellows.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do one final outreach and, and let them know that we need a response back, you know, and it's kind of interesting, maybe to Ms. Lutrell's point that she made earlier. I've had numerous correspondence with Mr. Pilecki over the course of the past week or so and that because of this continuity plan for the golf course. So I'm having no issues responding with him and everything and that. It may have simply been something that he missed, it may have been something that we missed. So let me, let's do the due diligence and make sure that, you know, we have the, we have the answers as to whether they want to be reappointed or not.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep, thanks. Anything else on this item? Public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? So move second.
Katie's going to put that in the minutes.
We are. Thank you very much.